And I'll talk a little bit about problem solving. Problem solving is a fundamental goal of any strong mathematic program. And so that means that it's very important to our team, but it's also important to our school district. And so when we've talked about the customizing and changing the pacing guide a little bit, that has allowed for us to put in some problem solving days. And due to that customizing, teachers are allowed up to two days per module or per unit to be creative and do problem solving days. And this is really important because we've provided resources, we've provided some training and some help in finding those problem solving tasks. But then teachers have the ability to choose what they would like to use for their problem solving tasks within their classroom, based on their students, based on their interests, based on even things that maybe they're looking ahead and thinking that possibly they would want to teach more of. In kindergarten, they may want to use something with money. It isn't something necessarily that's taught and assessed in kindergarten, but it may be something that really strengthens what they're learning in second grade. And so they can use that creativity and be able to use those problem solving days for that. But they can be real world tasks that promote reasoning and problem solving. They transfer and apply concepts and skills to new situations. And they really have to think through this. And so it's really promoting productive struggle in children. And that's something that we want to build in all kids from a very early age. Again, there's two days that they can use per module. The number of modules varies by grade level, okay? So that the days for problem solving also is going to vary. Teachers have flexibility, like I said, and then we've provided those resources so that they can pick and choose and be creative in those activities.
Is the problem solving, is it coming from the specific curriculum or do they extend outside?
We provide them a whole bunch of different resources to where we're going to say do problem solving days and they're not giving them and we support them. So a bunch of different resources. If, I mean, if they wanted to fully engage, they can, they're not restricted to, so they can pull. And if it's something they've done that works on really well, they love with problem solving, they can incorporate that. We've provided lots of resources with really good problem solving tasks because there's a lot of stuff that isn't good out there. So just to help teachers that aren't quite at that level of identifying a good task from a bad task, providing them those resources. And that's something we've continually built as we've found new things. Other questions? Thank you. This is me again. So in trainings, we've, especially in the solving word problems through tape diagrams, we had a Eurica trainer come in and she mentioned that the assessments were designed to be an assessment big of questions. So a lot of the feedback we've received from teachers and parents have been on the assessments. So we've been adjusting those and changing those to fit our kids and trying to make those purposeful. So we want to get data from them that we can use in our class and we want them to be effective. We don't want them to be so hard that we're not getting anything from them, but we don't want them to be so low level that, you know, they're pointless. So making that our own and making that a data collection point that we can use to really identify where our kids are struggling. We are making, these are kind of our goals for what we're starting to work on. So we've done the Common Assessments. This year, we started the Common Assessments K through six. We did basically the module assessment in its entirety for a pre and a post test and collected all that data and then gathered feedback from the teachers. So some, a lot of it was positive and then we did have some negatives. So we've kind of taken that and then again with the research we've found. So teams of writers have been formed from grades, focusing on first grade through eighth grade. Kindergarten will have to come later. A lot of their assessments are one-on-one, which pulls them out of core instruction and we're not willing to take days out of months to do these assessments. So we're working on developing a plan for that. But the task for this project is to create mid and end module assessments that are balanced of the higher level questions from the current mid and end module assessments as well as skill-based questions throughout the module. These assessments will allow for data collection to diagnose student mathematical understandings and misconceptions. So our purpose is to ensure all students are being given access to the rigorous high-level questions throughout the curriculum while also assessing the foundational skills that they need in place to do the higher level questions. So right now, our assessment from the feedback we're getting is they're difficult, they're very high level and some of them are even extensions on what they're learning. So we want kids to have exposure to that, but we also want to look at, do they have the foundational skills in place to do those higher level tests? So we are, so basically, we've got teams of writers formed, actually got with them for the first time today, and they're giving up guidelines and they're basically going to customize these assessments to our kids, our district. So we're going to pull pieces out of the current mid and end module and then pull pieces from the different components throughout the lessons that would address more of the foundational. And our whole purpose of this is so, you know, as a teacher, if I'm looking at my kids and the data from this assessment, I can identify, my kids are all struggling with this standard. I need to go here. Or maybe my kid's procedural is not a problem. They've got that. Maybe we're missing the application. I know how to do this, but I can't apply it to anything. So with this, right now, we've got these assessments that are all that extension, all that higher level. And so if we add that other piece to it and then we're working on, there is a program out there, there is a price to it that we're kind of looking into that will help us disaggregate that data. So we can, I can run a report on every kid in my classroom and look at, break down by standard, broken down by procedural conceptual application, what they're struggling with. Then again, we can look at that as a class and then we can look at that as a district. Which excites me the most because I want a curriculum that's purposeful and working for our district. So if we, let's say, we're looking at fourth grade and all of Module four, our scores are not good. Well, let's look at Module four, why not? Maybe there's something we're missing in the earlier years that our kids need that they're not getting. We can fill that in. So we'll be getting a lot of data, a lot of information from this that we can use to better, to better service our kids in the classroom and then as a district. We got in touch with the writers today. I sent out the, this is our task, this is our purpose. And anybody willing to volunteer. We had a good response that that teams of two or three writers, they'll work on writing that. We've set the guidelines and we worked as a math coach team and then Melissa helped me create those. And so they'll be turning those in and we'll be working on those. And then those will actually go out to teachers for feedback. And then we'll look at, depending on how long the writing process takes, our goal would be next year, but if we get into this, it's a lot of research. Teachers are really going to have to look at the foundational standards for this module. What's the best way to assess it? So if we get into the writing and it's taking longer than we intended, we'll definitely slow the process down and just roll it out, interquently get through the first three, and we'll work on the next for the next, next year. So that's kind of a wait and see, definitely project. We don't want to rush through and have something halfway good. We want it solid, we want it done well, and then, you know, start using it to work effectively. So. My throat's going dry, so I'm running out of. I'm very, very excited about this project. I'm really, really pumped. I think that we're gonna, I'm a data-driven person and I think this will give our teachers the resources to break down that data, to look at their kids, and then also to communicate it with parents. Hey, your kids are, you know, when I show you my results or their results, I can show you where they're struggling, whether or not in a what level. Is it the procedural part? Is it the application part? So I think that communication will help too, because I'm getting this with the data and able to share. We have a few teachers that have graciously volunteered. They're a little nervous, so.
I'm Desiree Delhan. I teach fifth grade math at Charles Stones. I just wrote down some things that I've really liked about Engage New York. I started three years ago. This is my third year with Engage New York. So I've been with only Engage New York full-time and I'd never seen Common Core until I started this because I taught kindergarten before. One thing I really like about Engage New York is the flow that it has from concrete to pictorial to abstract. And it really, really helps. I was telling Crystal, I had a homeschool child just starting my class this month, I guess last month, in January, and she hadn't done any more than single-digit multiplication. She had never even seen division or fractions. And we're, we just started a new unit using fractions and so she was lost and she was crying every day. But with the way that it's scaffolded and the things that she's seeing, the area models and the tape diagrams, she has an A in my class right now. And she, she was crying every day at the beginning because it was an old unit. And now that this new unit has started, she's seen all the area models, she knows how they work, she understands how she's getting the answer she's getting. And so that's one of the biggest things for me is the kids actually understand it when they can see it and they can manipulate things. So that's been one of my big, big things that I've enjoyed about Engage New York. The pacing guides have been really helpful this year. I'm in charge of the planning at my school. So I've taken it and I've actually planned out for the rest of this year already using that pacing guide. And this will be the first year since I've started where we will get through the entire six modules. And we use a review day that was built in for us that we didn't have before. We now have the two problem solving task days that we have built in. And we also have extra time to look at the M cap, which is something we haven't been able to do before because there's a lot of things, the skills that are on there that my students don't know, that they haven't been taught before. So that has been extremely helpful. Plus, we're going to get through things this year that my students didn't know last year and they were on the state assessments. We will be into our fifth module and that was the only thing that they were being tested on last year during state assessments. So they'll have seen all of that information before. It'd be nice if they could see all six of them before, but that's just, that's asking a little too much. We're also, I'm going to be doing one of the assessment teams to help with the assessments. And they're all, they're all Level Four assessments and our kids leave frustrated and they leave crying. We leave frustrated because we don't know how to help them. There are questions in there that it has taken us as educators 20 minutes to solve. And when they only have one period to finish this test and it's a word problem that goes on for four parts, it's really frustrating for the kids and it's, it's just too much. So it'll be really nice to make it so that they can understand a little bit more without losing some of that rigor. And the last thing I have, just because I had a lot of parents that were angry at the beginning of this whole process. I was involved in some of the parent nights and some of the administrator nights too, where we got to teach some of the lessons from Engage New York. And I don't think I've had a parent complaint since that first year. They're doing a lot better. It's really nice because we are able to send home more notes and parents can understand a lot more if they're seeing that it moves to ways that they understand how to teach their kids. They just have to build up to that point with the models and the tape diagrams and things, so.
I'm Kelly Quit, first grade at VO. This is my fifth year in the district. So I've been here from the beginning of Engage. And I'm going to be honest with you, I did not enjoy it at first. My first two years here with the old curriculum, it was not a great curriculum at all, but I felt it was, I was able to be more creative with it from my first year teaching my second year. And so, because we did centers and hands-on and that's the person I am and the educator I am. And so when this rolled out and it was just very scripted and how it was presented, I feel we really needed to follow it for just the accountable fact of teaching it. I didn't like it. And poor Diana, she heard from me and I was like, oh my gosh, I can't do this. This is not what I want to do as an educator. I don't want to be just a script. And then looking more into it, we got so much more flexible and it has been amazing. And so I, I came from the bottom to, I just love it now, which I'm being so honest. Just some words that I wrote down, strategies. You, I'm teaching these children and first graders and it's just amazing, maybe like five strategies a week and like eight strategies in a whole module. That's a lot, but no child earns the same. And so it's so nice for me and I learned so much about math just by teaching it. And so it's so nice to put all of these strategies on a plate and they get to grab and use what works best for them. So that's so nice and it puts them in kind of the driver's seat with their education. Yes, there's challenges, but that's life. We all have challenges. And like I said, I struggled with it. I came in to Engage as just a fixed mindset. I didn't like it. And then after researching and going to professional development, I have grown so much with it and my mindset is now a growth mindset and I'm so excited to just keep learning more about it. Mistakes, I wrote that down. They make mistakes and it's so great. I remember, might've been the first year that I was teaching this, I, yes, I looked at it and I studied it, but I still, there were strategies that I've never grown up with ever. And so I made a mistake teaching it and I was thinking, oh my gosh, that's so wrong. And just kind of started sweating in front of these poor first graders. I'm like, that's not right. I did not do that right. And they were like, what? You messed up? And I'm like, yeah. And so we backtracked, fixed it, and I'm like, huh, there we go. And so that was nice. And just, it's a curriculum and I know it's still kind of, a lot of people aren't on board with it yet, but it's a curriculum and all curriculums, they're there for the teacher to make their own. And they're there for the teacher to be creative with and know what their students need. And so I think, like I said, I think it's great now because every year, I feel like I kind of teach it a little different. I'm still obviously following it because you have to, it's a curriculum. But every year, we have different students. They take away different things from your teaching and I learn new things from them every day with Engage, so.
I'm Amber Doyle and this is my seventh year in the district. And I started Engage New York as a third grade teacher and then the next year went to second grade and it's kind of the same story. I don't know how many times I was in tears with Dee because it's hard as a third grader not having all that background. Go back, we went back to second grade and just, it was amazing. All of a sudden, all these things were clicking and then this year, I have them as third graders and we started in second grade and I was just telling Crystal this story the other day. We started fractions the other day. So you kind of touch on the second grade, not much, it's like the last thing after spring break. And we started it, day two of fractions, and we're cutting these strips to make different sizes. Day one, I completely messed it up. I cut the strips the wrong size. We start making thirds and my kids were like, did you mean to do this? And I was like, no, we're just going to try again tomorrow. And, you know, we make mistakes, whatever, we move on. And so we did it again, which with the flexibility of having that catch-up day, that was our makeup day for this module. We started the next day and we started cutting into halves and they were like, wait a minute, we can make fours. And I was like, how could we make fours? And they're like, well, half of a half would be a fourth. This is a third grader learning what a fraction is for the first time. And some kids like, isn't that like multiplying? Like you're multiplying them in half? And I was like, can you multiply them in half? So it just became this huge discussion that they started having. The basis of the lesson was how many pieces are in a whole, so you get in half. You have two pieces in a whole, thirds, three pieces, you know, on and on. We get done with that and a kid said, well, could you have thirds and fourths in a whole? So that turned into that, like whole discussion. So just all the extra background that we've had, it does build on each other and is frustrating. And there are days still that I'm like, oh, that didn't work out very well. And I just, I don't know, we talk about it as a class because we talk about mistakes and we fix it. But it's definitely nice to have the flexibility and being able to kind of change it up a little bit. But still, you see the strategies that are building and then.
Amber is one that went from the tears to presenting at the state conference this year, so.
And actually, all three of these ladies have volunteered to help write the assessments, they're part of the team writing the assessments. Appreciate you very much. Do you want to as well?
I just want to thank you for, I feel like you've really turned this into a teacher writing curriculum and we didn't start out that way. It's nice to hear your honesty that not everyone loved it at the beginning because I was one of those parents that struggled because I had a kid right in the middle of elementary school, actually two of them, and we struggled with it. And I still worry whether parts of it is developmentally appropriate, if we're throwing some stuff in there too early. But I really get the idea that you guys are adapting it to the needs of the kids. I appreciate that. It'd be nice to hear all your information.
It's a, I guess consumable is what you would call it. So the teachers are given all the components of it and then they can choose to copy the pieces they want. So, you know, I know some teachers do everything on the smart boards, it's not necessarily working on paper, and then some utilize the student, the student books. So they're printing off the problem sets, the homework. So teachers are given a manual, paper manual with all of the student components and then they can choose to copy the pieces they use or use it however they want. We don't, there's not a hard, backbound book. And since it is, since it's an online-based curriculum, they are updating it. So every year, we meet in May and look at any changes that maybe have been made and then push that out to teachers. For example, I'm drawing, like, second grade?
Module one.
Second grade, Module one. Feedback provided from, which is not our district, but across the country, people using Eurica or Engage New York providing feedback. They went in and revamped, I mean, that entire module. So that was something we reprinted and, you know, gave out to the teachers. The feedback from that, that was like last year, it was amazing because they were having lots of issues with that. So with it being online, if major updates come, we can, we give those out. So that's kind of nice when we're not stuck into something that has some errors that we can adapt and is there releasing that.
I understand that it comes home then as just, you know, one lesson and one homework paper. But in the past, we've been able to have parents who can read over the lesson and then they can help their children with whatever the homework is. Are you, you are sending more homework home or do you pretty much do it all in school now? Because I don't see that parents are able to actually have as much information as they might need to be able to help their children. It somewhat is concerning that it requires so much professional development for the teachers to understand the follow-on and what they're teaching. And I know the parents, they don't get that. They don't get even the text interior and the teaching part of it. So I think that we've limited the ability of parents to participate in their students' now development because I know several people have said, you know, when they try to teach it the old way, you know, their child doesn't understand because they've learned this fashion. So I think that's one aspect of it that's sort of eliminated the parent involvement now.
And as far as the PD, it's been, as far as content-wise, the role in the news standard. So not necessarily, it's been the changes, shifts in the standard and how that, how that's changed. And then we have done several things to help address that. I know if homework goes home, they're supposed to be attaching it with work that was done during the day. So, and then different teachers use the books different ways. I know some teachers have it all in the binder and the binder goes home, so that whole thing is together. I know some teachers, they hold a lesson by lesson. That would just vary by classroom, by teacher. There is, again, the online resources that parents have access to, they won't have access to, obviously, and they don't have to get to it. We have the parent newsletters. Definitely something, that's a continual thing we're reflecting on and looking at how we can support our parents.
Well, I do think that's an aspect of it that really needs to be considered because if we're going to have a system which is pretty much only available during the school day for the students at school and it's sort of a teacher-student relationship during the day, we can't expect as much help as maybe we have had in the past from the parents with what they're learning at home.
Well, you know, I don't, you know, when we send homework, we're sending homeless resources, but then I know, I mean, and I'll let you guys talk, I don't want to talk for you, but I know parents, I know teachers, parents that are reaching out, hey, I need help. I know teachers are able to answer those emails or answer those phone calls or, you know, engage in that one-on-one conversation, you know, because what, one parent, student may need help with, you know, and other student may not. So I just want to explain homework and I kind of talked to you a little bit about that.
I understand that, you know, that it's going to be teachers' specific. I'm happy to see that it's become more flexible and the pacing has been adjusted. But it is somewhat concerning that we have these well-qualified teachers and yet we've provided a script and a pacing guide and we've so regulated their ability to be flexible and apparently that's improved. But it's concerning that we would approach that initially in that fashion. So I think we're moving in the right direction, but I'd sure would like to see the teachers have as much flexibility as they need to be able to address the needs in their classroom on a day-to-day basis and not have to wait for a flex day or whatever is needed. And also regarding the assessments, those are assessments that are done by our teachers based on what they taught their students?
The mid and end module, those are included within?
Those are with, with, yeah. By our, the last part of your lecture that we were talking about.
So this is basic, this one, so this is basically those mid and end module assessments and we're going to customize them to that our kids, our teachers need. So we're going to take components of the ones that are already created because they are those higher-level DOK for pieces of that and then adding in that foundational stuff that we're working on throughout the module. So I have a, basically a bigger picture of my students. Like maybe they're struggling with this higher-level stuff, but is it because they're not applying it or do they have major foundational, you know, skills or concepts that they're not getting? So a lot of the feedback from the teachers on the assessments were, they were intensive, you know, this isn't, this isn't showing what my kids can do, what I've seen them do this whole module. So we want to, again, make those purposeful. We want teachers to be able to get data from them that they can, that they can use, that, you know, is matching what they're seeing in the classrooms.
Is this something you're in progress of doing now for next year or you're?
Yes, we started the writing process. We started it today. Well, I just met with the writers today. So the ideal with this, we'd be coming out next year. However, we're just starting. So as they get into writing this, again, I don't want to rush it. I want something to come out good quality. So it's a, we talked to the writers and that's a continual process. I'll be checking in with them constantly. But as those are being written and they said, I, we need more time to make these good, then we'll slow that process down. So that's a little, I'll have more of an update, you know, in April, we'll know how that process is going.
Is the data for these assessments statewide or, I mean, what are, what's our clue that we're going to need to?
As far as this?
Well, I figure if we're giving an assessment and we're going to resolve, what does that tell us? Does it tell our, our students are doing and preparing to, prepare to students across the state, across the nation?
It would be a standard, it would be a standard-based assessment. So on this set of standards, this is how their student performs. Like, so they're struggling with this, they're not struggling with this. So as an individual classroom, that's what I would look at. As a district level, we can look at, again, you know, we'll have this data hopefully once we roll this out. But I can look at, let's say, fifth grade is really struggling with this standard as a district. Well, let's look, where is it built in Engage New York? Is it not enough? Do we need to, you know, build that in more? Is it a teacher development thing? So we're gathering data specifically on our kids, our district, and how, again, how we can adjust if we need to, this curriculum, we make it fit.
Isn't these are just like chapter tests?
Yeah.
I mean, they're not like a state assessment that everyone's taking all over the world. I mean, it's just a chapter test.
But it should transfer if they do well on these, it should transfer to state assessments as well.
I was saying, our Module Five was like the state assessments. So some of the things we were learning was on the state assessments last year. Well, everything we were learning in Module Five.
She brought that up because they hadn't gotten to Module Five yet, but it was a set of state assessments, but they decided to get that content, yeah.
Well, they seem to be really helpful in, for the teachers in terms of adjusting or reteaching or something. But when we get to the state assessment, and then we go on to high school and maybe take an ICP, that's what I really wanna see some good math scores in.
Right.
So I'm, I'm hoping that this will eventually lead to that, but I don't know. The data yet to tell us.
And Jean, that, that's right along with exactly what we're trying to do. You've heard us tell you before, math hasn't changed, but the way we teach math needs to... The standards have really forced us to look at not just the procedural part of math, which is how most of us really work math, but also the conceptual and the application levels. And that takes more time. It's taken training with our staff. But our students now, the goal here is that they don't necessarily just memorize a procedure in order to come up with an answer, but they truly understand and think through the mathematical concepts, so they can come up with the correct solutions. And I think you hit on something here. You know, one of the things you've heard me talk about is, I've charged these folks with coming up with a system to measure, monitor, and report student progress. This is the start of that. You know, we don't ever want to base our decisions on one score. So we have AIMS Web data that we use as a screener. We have state assessment then, that we use somewhat as a summative measure. But this, what Crystal and her group has come up with, is really more of a diagnostic piece that can help teachers report to parents where kids are at, but really understand where kids are at and adjust their instruction to fit what the needs of those students are. So to me, this is really exciting stuff, because I, I think we're about at the point that we will have enough data collected that we can not only make those meaningful reports to students and parents, but as Crystal said earlier, we can look at our curriculum and where are the gaps? We can look at our alignment with the state assessments. We can adjust our professional development based on how our kids are performing on these assessments. And so, and we have teachers that are gonna be involved in the development of those assessments, and they'll review those every year. Are they working? Are they not working? Do we need to change questions? Do we need to remove, add? And, and, and so really adapting to what their needs are in the classroom. The other thing is, we've got a couple of experts here, where we don't have that very often, that are sitting there in the back of the room. And I'd like to hear from one or both of them what, what they think of what we're doing in math.
Well, I'll just go with what you're saying. The, the information that you're gonna get from these assessments is going to tell you so much information about where your kids are, where the gaps are. And then we'll use that information to design interventions to fill those gaps and just, you know, move our kids along, and then you go. And the goal, I don't think we do it. Jean, when you talk about, you know, you want to see scores in high school and PACT going up, what they're doing right now is going to, I really believe that that's gonna happen. Because the assessments that they're creating are in alignment to the state assessments, and very similar to the types of questions that we said in Module 5 was exactly what was on there. So they raised the bar, but the data that we're going to get is going to tell us exactly where the gaps are, and then give us some information as to how we fill those gaps.
I would add too, I think it's really exciting to see, just coming from last year to this year, how the instruction is so much more student-centered in terms of who you hear talking math, thinking math, and so forth. Having been in classrooms last year where there are traditional textbooks on the desk, the teacher was doing largely, a lot of the talking and explaining things, to today where the students were, they were the ones doing all, doing the math. There was one classroom where the teacher was passing out, and she took the Gaze New York, customized it, made the little equation, equations on his card, and was handing them out based on the students' needs, what they were ready for.
She was differentiating how she went. She was looking at them.
And that, that was a classroom that, it wasn't like that before. But had given the, seeing what it's about and what students are capable of was very, I think, eye-opening to them. And it was really awesome to see what students were doing, the questions the teacher would pose, and so on. And then another classroom where they were talking about the formula for circumference, and as they, the, the way the tasks were lined up, they got to finding the area of a semicircle. So they had to figure out that I was gonna take half of circumference and add a diameter. And, and that was a really cool thing, to see them have the reasoning ability to take something that they had learned and piece together other, piece together something to create something new. And.
And you've been in, you've been in so many classrooms, well, for three years now, and what she said. I mean, it's, kids are talking about that, it's a reason, I mean, it's just.
But you also hear things they don't understand too. You also hear things you think, "Wow, they, they just really are confused about, you know, positive and negative numbers, or whatever it might be." But those are all things, not only these assessments, but the assessment you can do as you're listening to them and watching them work. And then as a teacher, you can make decisions about, okay, what am I gonna, what I need to do might be a little different for that kid, with this kid, I'm gonna spend time with this one while they're working, and so forth, so.
Did I say my favorite word? Metacognition. I've heard a lot of comments about the pacing guide. Now, I think it's, I mean, while it might have been called that in past curriculums, you had to have something, so if you're a A and you're still on Chapter 1, you know something's wrong. So, I mean, while you didn't have a specific pacing guide in other curriculums, or it was called it that, there was something so teachers knew, "Okay, it's Christmas break, I should be on Chapter 5."
Laura, can I jump in there too? Just, I was thinking the same thing when you were talking. I think we put the focus on pacing guides in math, but social studies adopted their new curriculum this year. They met and said, "We need to be through the Renaissance period, and by this date, in World War I, by this date, depending on what history class they're teaching." You know, in upper-level classes, it's called a syllabus. But almost every curriculum has some sort of a guide that, that guides them as to what they need to accomplish by the end of the year, and then many goals of chapters, units, and so forth. So I think we, in math, we weren't used to that as much with the new standards, and really figuring out the pace that we needed with the new standards in the new curriculum. But I, I look at language arts, and all the sophomores at the high school, you know, in English, they want to cover this unit, or this novel, in this amount of time. So pacing guides are actually really common across all curriculums.
I think it's important that we do that district-wide, not building-wide, or teacher-specific, so that every student, every building is getting the same education.
Correct.
It also helps, we have a lot of kids that transfer.